Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Board of Education on March 21st, 2004. Ms. Juzinski, could you call the roll, please?
Sure. Ms. Cullinan?
Present.
Mr. Eckie?
Present.
Mr. Grippo?
Here.
Ms. Harrigan?
Here.
Mr. Perigini?
Here.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Mr. White?
Here.
Now, Chair, you have a call.
Thank you. Could everyone stand and join us in a pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have Andrew, our student representative, and I believe Ella is at opening night of the play, Mean Girls, the musical. So you are solo tonight, Nesspa.
So there's been a lot going on in Cheshire High School recently in March. So earlier this month, DECA, our high school's business club, or one of two, the other is FBLA. We had a team of 18 students compete against other towns in a business competition at the Aquaturf in Southington. Before arriving, members had to take an online test and were graded on it. Some competed in role-play activities, graded by judges, in the aspects of marketing and merchandising. They had a focus on those two, and we congratulate Anan for placing third and Suchita for placing first in their events. So spring sports have been a full go now recently. Games are beginning in the following weeks with baseball, lacrosse, track and field, boys' volleyball, golf, tennis, and softball. Recently, there was a basketball tournament at our school for students with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And recently, Best Buddies had a pajama day to support their organization. So congratulations, obviously, to Cheshire Hockey, who won both the SCC title and the Division Two state title. It was a blast going to all of the games in West Haven, in Hampden, and especially at Quinnipiac for the last two. Tomorrow, there's a volleyball tournament at our school. It involves seniors, juniors, sophomores, and all faculty. It should be fun, and it allows all students to go compete against their peers in a fun and respectful manner. So next week, at DOD, there will be a middle school leadership conference that many of our students at CHS will go and help out with and speak at on the panel. So, school-wise, there's been a lot of AP exam preparation for what's happening in May. And today, the juniors took the SATs, and unfortunately, there were no math classes for anyone today. So on March 15th, there are a ton of town scholarships that were due that will help out a ton of students at our school with affording college or whatever career path they're taking after high school, whether it's trade school or going directly into the workforce. And on April 3rd, the Cheshire Youth and Human Services Committee and Western Connecticut Coalition is sponsoring this Screenagers Under the Influence event to address vaping, drugs, and alcohol in the digital age in the auditorium. As many of you know, this is a big issue at CHS, and there are a ton of ways that CHS is trying to combat this issue, and this is one big way to spread awareness to students. So we encourage as many people to attend as possible. On March 23rd, the Cheshire Chamber of Commerce is hosting the Home Health and Garden Show. The Kiwanis Club will host a breakfast, and there will be pizza wars between town restaurants, flower planting, face painting, time with animals, and many more fun activities for children. So, moving towards the end, juniors are preparing for junior prom, which will occur in April, and same thing for seniors, but that's on May 11th. And I feel like the months are flying by now with us getting closer to graduation every single day. And to end it off, I encourage everyone here to go see the Mean Girls play that, obviously, Ella is in tonight. It's playing tonight, tomorrow night, and Saturday night. So we wish everyone in the play the best of luck.
Thank you, Andrew. Great report. I have my tickets for tomorrow night. Any questions or comments for Andrew before we let him go? Tim?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, as usual, for helping out here and giving us the story of what's happening at high school. I just want to say thank you very much for the comment that you made before about scholarships, which may be eligible not just for college, but for other career pathways as students go beyond high school. And enjoy the next couple of months. It's going to be a lot of fun for you.
Yeah, of course.
Anyone else? I guess you're free to go.
All right. Thank you very much.
Good night. Next on our agenda is a presentation for a school partnership. So, Mr. Grippo, would you like to make the Doolittle School presentation?
Test, test. All right, there we go. Okay. This year, Doolittle School decided to nominate Matt Kohlhauser for the 2324 School Partnership Award. Matt has served as the Doolittle PTA treasurer for the last four years. Along with the PTA, he helped to create the Doolittle Mini Grants Program. This program allows Doolittle teachers to request funds for special projects in their classrooms or in the school. Matt has also worked for school staff and parents to organize the parent back-to-school supplies ordering. This undertaking involves collaborating and coordinating with parents and school office personnel in spring in several hours of work over the summer sorting and delivering the supplies to the classrooms. The Doolittle mascot is a tiger, and this year, along with the PTA, an tiger costume was purchased, and a school voting contest was held to name the tiger. Matt Kohlhauser has been instrumental in bringing the Doolittle Tiger Stripes to life. Stripes has visited their town meetings and has become an important part of life at Doolittle School. Thank you to Matt for leading many initiatives at Doolittle School through your work on the PTA and as a parent and community leader. The Board of Education thanks Matt Kohlhauser for going above and beyond for Cheshire Public Schools.
Thanks, Matt. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Dr. Solen, you have another?
Yeah, if I could just, very quick, before we transition to the next one, a quick plug for Matt. You know, he is obviously so supportive and instrumental in our school modernization planning, and I have a million nice things to say about him aside from him being a CAPS fan. You know, he's also from upstate New York. There's so many amazing things to say about this guy. But I do want to thank you personally as well for not only, you know, everything that you've done with respect to our school modernization stuff, but you're a constant and consistent partner. Even the calendar committee, you're always willing to pitch in, and that is part of what makes our school system so successful, is people like you that contribute your time and energy and talent to help us. So, thank you very much, Matt. The next presentation is a special recognition, not just a Board of Education recognition, but a statewide recognition through the Connecticut Association of Schools. So I'll welcome a familiar face who happens to be representing the Connecticut Association of Schools tonight, along with our own Dr. Gad. Please welcome Diana Burns.
Good evening. My name is Diana Burns, and I am not only the proud principal of Chapman School, but I'm a member of the Awards and Recognition Board of Connecticut Association of Schools, more commonly known as CAS. It is truly a pleasure to be here this evening to share in the presentation of the Distinguished Friend of Education Award to a very special member of our community, Mr. Mike Federico. I'd like to ask Mike to come join me at the podium. CAS established the Distinguished Friend of Education Awards in 1983 to honor individuals who have dedicated themselves to improving educational opportunities and outcomes to students at local, state, and regional level. This is the highest award given by our association to persons not directly employed in public education. This is also our most popular and competitive award. The fact that, Mike, you were chosen as the winner among dozens and dozens of deserving volunteers across the state who were nominated speaks to the depth and duration of your commitment and scope and scale of your impact. Presenting the Distinguished Friend of Education Award is such a treat for me, as I get to see amazingly unselfish and generous volunteers get recognized, like yourself, Mike, that deserve this and who never seek the attention. Mike Federico is an exemplar of the Distinguished Friend of Education. For the past 15 years, you have put your efforts into the behalf of the Cheshire High School Booster Club, as well as the larger Southern Connecticut Conference, and have opened doors, inspired possibilities, enriched experiences for countless young people in Cheshire and beyond. Mike, on behalf of Connecticut Association Schools and the member schools that we represent, I congratulate you on the achievement of this much-earned recognition. I'd like to now turn the podium over to Dr. Gad, who nominated you for this award.
Thank you, Diana. And thank you, everyone, for having us present this wonderful award to Mike Federico. And let me just tell a little bit more personally about why Mike was nominated for this award. Mike is a friend and a partner of Cheshire High School and Cheshire Public Schools. Mike is the definition of someone who has made an extraordinary contribution to the students of Cheshire High School and Cheshire Public Schools over an extended period of time, long after his children graduated. Mike continues to bring his boundless energy to not only raise money for our athletic teams, fund scholarships, but also cook the best concession stand food in the state of Connecticut. He has a special certification that allows us to run our concession stand, and he logs, I can't tell you, countless volunteer hours as the head chef during athletic and other events. The Cheshire High School concession stand is widely popular in the Southern Connecticut Conference and in music circles, and he's famous for the Triple B. You got to have it if you haven't had it. So come to a game where music and motion are one of the many youth sporting events that access the concession stand that he runs with expertise, humor, and kindness. Before Mike took control of the concessions, it would gross around $7,500 to $8,000 a year. Under Mike's watch, the concession stand grosses between $6,000 and $8,000 on a Friday night alone. Simply put, Mike Federico makes it possible for our students to have opportunities, and his hard work raises money that goes to the Cheshire High School Booster Club, for which Mike serves as the treasurer. Our Booster Club supports students by paying for impact testing, a baseline test used to enhance our concussion protocols, a wide variety of student scholarships, grants to sports teams and school clubs and organizations to enhance the overall student experience, and the many banners that hang in our gymnasiums to celebrate our students. This is what that fundraising has made possible, and these are just a few of the examples. Mike does all of this as a volunteer, including contributing his accounting service to our field hockey team, ice hockey team, and lacrosse programs, and the SCC conference. We sincerely thank Mike for his extraordinary contributions to Cheshire High School, Cheshire Public Schools, and the many students we serve. We are a much, much better community having Mike as our friend and partner, Mike Federico. Would you mind if Diana came in?
Thank you. I think you want to have me go out pretty early.
Ready? One, two. Thank you.
Do you want to get in there?
No, I don't. Thank you, though.
If you jump in, we'll put you on the menu board.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you. Can you say thank you? It's a pleasure. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Obviously, that layout is working well. I'm sure you're happy, Brian. We're happy.
Next on the agenda, is there any comments from any audience members who would like to address the Board of Education? Seeing none, we will move on to committee reports. The first one is curriculum, but I believe we did not have a curriculum committee meeting since the last business meeting, so we will pass over that one. Next is finance, and I would ask Mr. Maciana to discuss the finance report, including the medical benefits and the audit reports.
Thank you, Dr. Harrigan. Good evening, board members, audience members. The board does have the finance report. I will give a quick summary and then, you know, certainly answer any questions. The budget this year, as the board knows, is $84.9 million. Through the end of February, as of February 29th, we've expended or encumbered $75.1 million, about 88.4% of our budget, which is in line with what we would expect at this time of year. So we're through eight months of the year. I certainly am confident that we will end the year in balance. However, there are a couple of pressing budget pressure points, I would say. You know, one has to do with special education outplace tuition. The board knows that we've seen the outplace costs go up this year above budget because of students that not so much necessarily moved into district, but were identified with needs that exceed the capacities we have in the schools, so we have had to outplace those students. During February, we saw additional students that had to be outplaced. So, you know, as of the end of February, the negative variance in that budget category is $374,000. We will be able to make up that overage through our other line item accounts as we get into the months of April and May. We'll provide more definitive updates, but again, I don't have any concern about us balancing the budget, but that is certainly a pressure point. And over the last few years, the outplace tuition costs have been under budget, but this year is not in keeping with prior years. The second pressure point, and this is relatively small, but it is important, the unpaid meal balances from students who use our food service program. As you know, students are eligible for free and reduced meals. They do not pay for meals, or they don't pay full price for meals. This year, the state of Connecticut is providing free breakfast for all students under a special program. However, lunch meals are not free for all students, other than those that are free and reduced price for those that are eligible for reduced. So, as I reported, you know, initially in January, the balance of unpaid meals was $19,000, which is an all-time high. The most we've ever had in one year is about $4,000. The concern was that if the trend continued, we'd end the year potentially with $40,000 of unpaid balances, which the board is then responsible to reimburse the food service program under state law. As I explained to the board in January, we were undergoing efforts to work to try and collect unpaid meal balances, and the good news is that the balances haven't increased. We've been able to keep them in check. We are doing follow-up by Parent Square, emails to parents, and we are also making phone calls to the higher balances that are owed. So as we entered early March, that balance is still around $19,000. If it trends up, I don't believe we'll be at $40,000. Might be at $30,000, but we continue to follow up in a respectful manner. We recognize that, you know, families that may not qualify for free and reduce doesn't mean that it's affordable to them, because the thresholds in Connecticut are really very, very low to qualify. $55,000 for a family of four in order to get reduced meals, and it's around $40,000 for free meals. So those are federal guidelines. They are not adjusted for regional differences. We have asked our legislators to consider changing that. I'm not sure it will happen, but that's where the balance stands. And that's really it on the finance report.
Can we take a question?
Yes, sure.
Go ahead, Tim.
Thank you, Ann. Yeah, then, so I had a couple people contact me about the meals, unpaid meals, and I generally share their concern. I have no doubt that some, probably most of that balance, is people who, like you said, $55,000 for a family of four here in Cheshire. That doesn't work, and that's only for reduced meals. Nonetheless, I am concerned, even if it's only a couple families, that have the ability to pay, and they don't, because it's kind of a get-out-of-jail-free card given by the state, right? You don't have to pay ultimately. What I'm wondering is, I guess my first question is, when you have the contact with the families, are you advising them about various local and state programs, social service programs, that might be more appropriate for them? And, I mean, one that comes to mind is just like the food pantry here in town. I mean, there's various things like that. Do you and your team advise people about those things?
Well, I'm going to answer the question, and I do want to acknowledge that
Oh, yeah.
Our food service director extraordinaire, Erica Biagetti, is here with us this evening, not for this topic, because we are doing healthy food certification, which are motions that the board needs to consider this evening.
Cookies are great.
And a Chapman composting update. But I will tell you that, you know, we do notify families if they have an unpaid balance. We certainly let them know about the free and reduced programs that are available through the state. You know, as far as letting them know about other sources, Erica, would you mind addressing the board? Is that okay? Because I
Please do.
She can speak with firsthand knowledge.
A microphone, so that people TV land can hear.
I'm not used to microphones. I'm just normally very loud myself. We do advise them, we give them the free and reduce application, as well as the SNAP benefits and Husky, all the information's on the website. We instruct them of the food pantry, any location, and any help that we can provide. We try to work with families. We tell them they can resubmit an application at any point throughout the year, multiple times. It's not just a one application, and you're denied, and that's all. So we do try to work with them as best we can and speak with everyone. I know I've spoken with many families across the board when they're approved, denied, looking to apply any information.
I will add, and Erica, just stay there for a second. You know, we did look, Erica and I did look, and we had a discussion today. The families with the highest balances, you know, we took a closer look at those, and Erica compared to see if any of those families had applied for free and reduced and were denied. And it was about 25%
25%.
Of the highest balance families, you know. And so there are clearly families that tried because they just don't have the means, but they didn't qualify for those guidelines. You know, we certainly think that that's an important thing for our legislators to continue to work at. It just doesn't make sense for Connecticut, and certainly not for Cheshire, in my opinion. Anything else that I missed on that one?
We did notice that out of the, like, almost 20,000, that there is about 15,000 of it is dedicated to just 68 students and approximately about 50-ish families. So those are definitely, having 25% of them either apply and be denied, or qualify for free or reduced. So it is, the thresholds are much, much too low. And there was even a state call today with, this is a statewide issue, and it is highly discussed amongst all food service directors, to be able to improve it so that we're not having to call families about unpaid meal charges.
And I have submitted testimony on our behalf to that effect as well. It's not a Cheshire issue, statewide issue, as Erica's saying.
Yeah, no, thank you. I appreciate that. And I, for one, personally, am totally comfortable helping people who are in need, however that exactly is defined. It's just difficult for me to step away and say, there's nobody there who's just sort of taking advantage of a bad situation, and a situation that's created by the state, when they could afford to pay. I know there's other people who are equally concerned, so whatever you can do. Of course, taking into account the notion of cost benefit, I don't want you spending 100 man-hours for a $50 bill that's payable. So you have to balance it, but the basic idea of if somebody can pay, they should be paying, just to try to enforce that. And I'm confident that you are doing that, but I just wanted to reinforce that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And does that unpaid balance get worked into our operating budget?
Yes. And again, we've had to do that in the past. It just hasn't been this high. And the other thing that I will mention is that families at the end of the year who have a remaining balance in their account and their children graduate, they have the option of getting it back or just donating it. And we do use that at the end of the year, and we have, like last year, to offset some of the unpaid balances, but the bulk of it will come from the operating budget. So we'll make sure that we have funds available to cover that when we do the year-end board meeting to balance out the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Maciana. I believe Mr. Grippo has a question.
Thank you. Mr. Maciana, as far as tuition outplacement goes, since it's budget season, how much of our overrun that we have right now has been accounted for for next year, or is this a complete surprise in regards to planning?
We asked for an increase of $500,000 in that outplaced tuition line for next year, anticipating, just because of, you know, trends and enrollment growth that, you know, we know is occurring in our town. So we did have that in the budget request. So we would go from roughly $2 million to $2.5 million for next year, is the request, if it's approved.
Thank you, Mr. Maciana. Do you have, what are we moving on to now? Medical benefits?
I do. And I did provide the, actually, the January and February reports for the board for this evening. I'll just review the February report, get you up to date. And I'll start with the, this year's medical benefits budget, I just want to reiterate I just want to reiterate that the goal was to have enough funding to cover our claims, so that the beginning balance of our reserve fund would be the ending balance of, of the reserve fund. So, the beginning balance in the reserve fund was two million fifty thousand. This month, total claims were a million seventy thousand dollars, so just below the one-point-one million dollars expected. So, we added to our reserve by sixteen thousand, and then backing up January, which I didn't report on at the board meeting last year, we didn't have the report, that claims came in at one-point-two million, so that was a little over the one-point-one million, so that decreased the reserve balance by eighty-four thousand. So, as of the end of February, our reserve balance stood at one million seven-hundred-ninety-eight-thousand, oh-eighty-four. So, because of the difference between contributions and claims, the reserve balance has decreased by two-hundred-fifty-two thousand dollars so far this year. However, I did want to let you know two things that are happening. One is that during the month of, of March, we are receiving approximately two-hundred-thousand dollars of additional prescription rebates, so that will help buoy up and increase that reserve balance. And also, we, we definitely have had some large claims that have exceeded the hundred-seventy-five-thousand-dollar threshold, so I expect another hundred thousand dollars to be paid to us in either March or April. So, we're going to be pretty close to where the reserve balance we would expect to be, will be. Claims are running a little bit higher than was budgeted by about, you know, four-point-eight percent. So, all in all, we're okay. I mean, I would love to see claims lower, but, you know, we, we don't have any control over the claims. So, that's the medical benefits update. Any questions on that? Ms. Harrigan, would you like me to do the audit committee report?
Yes, I would. Thank you.
This one's pretty easy this year. The town council has an audit committee met with the auditors, Clifton, Larson Allen, C.L.A., on February fifteenth. This is part of the annual audit. The auditors come in and give a report to the town council's audit committee. Again, that took place on February fifteenth. The auditors not only review the books and records of the town, but also the books and records of the Board of Ed. I'm pleased to let you know that the town received an unmodified opinion of the town's financial records for the year-ending June thirtieth, 2020-23, so there were no negative findings, and the financial statements of the town are represented fairly. In the annual comprehensive financial report, which is issued, we did provide a link to this document that is on the town's website, which has a lot of information. I will not be reviewing it this evening. I did want to let you know two other things related to the audit that's important. Part of the audit is a review of all the grants, that are federal grants, as well as state grants. The largest federal grant that we have, you know, is our National School Lunch Program. And then, there's a variety of state grants as well. Those grant reviews went well. There were no negative findings. And there is a management letter that's issued. There was nothing of substance that was noted, you know, for the board or the town in the management report, just a series of suggestions, you know, which includes things like, you know, doing an annual, you know, review for fraud, and procedures and policies. So, you know, this went very well for both the town and Board of Ed for this year's audit.
And that audit is done how often?
Every year.
It is.
And, you know, usually the preliminary works, you know, begins in, in September, after the June thirtieth year-end, and it runs through into December. And, you know, typically, it's supposed to be done by the end of December, but like many towns, you know, there's extensions that were filed. So, the audit was completed, you know, in January this year.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions on the audit for Mr. Masiana? Mr. Grippo?
Mr. Masiana, did the auditors do any testing of your newly implemented internal controls for, what was it?
Student activity.
For student activity, yeah.
Yes, they do. And that, every year, generally, they do an overview of student activity and pick one school's student activity accounts to look deeper. And again, there were no findings on student activity, or anything else for that matter that, that is reviewed as part of the audit.
I think, did you also implement a new system? I think you had, was it a new accounting system, and then a new payment system? Or did you just bring everything under school, what was that thing that we use?
We did implement several years ago, the new student activity online software, E-P-E-S. The last, it might not have even, it might have been two years ago now, you know, we went through, we did an update of the student activity policy and the regulations that lie beneath the policy. We've added training for student activity as a, as a video course in our vector training, which is our learning management system for new secretaries that are hired to do student activity in any particular school. So, we've come a long way, not only in terms of tightening the regulations, but we've also improved the training that's available for new secretaries as they come in.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I appreciate it.
Mr. White?
Thank you. Do the auditors opine on either our pensions, or our OPEB, the other post-retirement employment benefits? And I'm, I'm thinking the actuaries would come in with numbers and recommendations for us, but I'm not sure if the auditors opine on it. I'm just curious.
Well, they present, they do present in the, in the CAFER. There's the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. There's a lot of detail about, you know, not only the pension plans, but all our liabilities, including, you know, OPEB. And there was nothing outstanding, and, and from a negative point of view, you know, certainly, the, the town meets the requirements for the town. Pension fund, you know, as, as we've talked during our budget, is, you know, approximately seventy percent funded, which is pretty good compared to other communities. So, a lot of detail in the CAFER.
Okay. Thank you.
You need some reading for tonight?
Oh, joy.
Thank you, Mr. Masiana.
You're welcome.
We ready to move on to Personnel Committee? And I will call upon Dr. Solan to report and explain our yearly non-renewal of teachers' contracts, and then we have a couple of motions.
Thank you, Dr. Harrigan. Good evening, everybody. And, you know, unfortunately, this is something that, as you mentioned, we do engage in pretty Basically, when we go through the budget process, there's a potential that the budget not be resolved by May first. I think this year, there's probably a limited chance of that could happen, but we have to, either we risk being forced to carry all interim teacher contracts, or non-tenured contracts, even if we don't have the money to cover it, or we have to non-renew people. So, it's a kind of a, a protocol to protect ourselves against a sort of financial catastrophe. I'm proud that, you know, in the twenty years I've worked in the district, I can only think of a couple of times where we've unfortunately had to not have people come back. But like I said, this is a process in place to kind of protect ourselves against that potentiality, is regardless of how small it is, the likelihood. Interim contracts, interim teachers are people that we hire, usually on a one-year contract, to replace somebody who might be on like maternity leave, or something like that, some sort of medical leave, or just a leave of absence. And we, well, we don't have many. I would ask that you make the motion and non-renew that position. Those folks are generally working under the understanding that they wouldn't be automatically brought back next year anyway, because, like I said, they're replacing somebody who's one of our full-time staff. The next motion is directed toward non-tenured teachers, and in this instance, we are only offering the contract automatically to people in their third and second year, or third and fourth year. We're non-renewing people in their first and second year. And we try and make that decision. We could just do the first four years every year, but Vin and I, and Marlene, we take a look at how many teachers are in the pool, and rather than create a lot of anxiety for people, if it's unwarranted, we identify how many years of folks we would seek to non-renew. And then, of course, once our budget is established, and their position is secured, we notify them immediately that they'll be returning, because particularly in a climate where it's hard to recruit and retain teachers, we want to do everything we can to make them feel comfortable and assured that they have a position, because God knows, we need them. So, that's the background on those. I can answer any questions, and the motions are available in your packet.
Great. So, let's make the motions one by one, and we'll take any questions after they're seconded. Ann Marie, would you like to make the first motion?
That the Cheshire Board of Education pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 10-151 authorizes the superintendent to non-renew the teacher contracts of all certified professional employees serving under an interim contract subject to the CGS 10-151 at the end of the 2023-24 school year.
Do I have a second for that motion? Mr. Perigini? Are there any questions for Dr. Solan at this point? Yes, Mark?
Just out of curiosity, how many teachers would this affect? You know, I, I apologize that I don't know the total delineated. I think it's about seventeen between interim and first, second-year people. You know, we have about four hundred teachers in the district, so as a percentage, it's a relatively small group.
Anyone else? Great. So, the motion on the table is that the Cheshire Board of Education pursuant to CGS 10-151 authorizes the superintendent to non-renew the teacher contracts of all certified professional employees serving under an interim contract subject to CGS 10-151 at the end of the 2023-24 school year. All in favor? It's unanimous? Thank you. Next motion.
That the Cheshire Board of Education pursuant to CGS 10-151 authorize the superintendent to non-renew the teacher contracts of non-tenured certified professional employees under contract for the Cheshire Public Schools, as recommended by the superintendent, subject to CGS 10-151 at the end of the 2023-2024 school year, and further to authorize the superintendent to communicate written notice of such non-renewal to the affected teachers.
Thank you. Do I have a second on that one? Thank you, Mr. White. Are there any questions for Dr. Solan on that one? Seeing none, the motion on the table is that the Cheshire Board of Education pursuant to CGS 10-151 authorizes the superintendent to non-renew the teacher contracts of non-tenured certified professional employees under contract for the Cheshire Public Schools, as recommended by the superintendent, subject to CGS 10-151 at the end of the 2023-24 school year, and further to authorize the superintendent to communicate written notice of such non-renewal to the affected teachers. All in favor? Thank you. It's unanimous of those who are here. Thank you, everyone. And thanks for the explanation. Let's move on to Planning Committee. Mr. Ecki, do you have a report for us?
We spent some time speaking about the situation with portable classrooms behind Highland School. We are waiting for final numbers. It sounds like we were all in relative agreement that it might be better to purchase, rather than lease, the temporary classrooms, just because of their usefulness over time and, and return on the investment. But once we get the numbers, Mr. Masiana is going to let us know, and we will make a decision on that. And he has offered to update us on the Energia, Energy Performance Contract.
Great.
Thank you. The Energy Performance Contract, just to refresh the board's memory, we are looking to try and find some energy savings to offset some infrastructure improvements in our schools and our towns. We contracted with Energia. They completed their initial review, looking at our utility bills, electric, natural gas, as well as, as oil and even, and water consumption. And their initial findings were that there's potentially about three-hundred-thirty-five-thousand dollars per year in energy savings. And if you do the math, which they did for us, that could fund approximately six million dollars worth of infrastructure projects between the school and town buildings. The next step, which we, you know, agreed to have Energia do, is actually issue an RFP to try and find companies that will come in and do an in-depth review of the school and town buildings, and make formal proposals as to exactly what work would be done, what the energy savings would be, and ultimately answer the question, is there an Energy Performance Contract that would make sense where, you know, for example, we can upgrade, you know, all our lighting to LED, which hasn't already been upgraded, make some improvements to buildings. And one of the things that we talked about specifically was, can we air-condition Doolittle? Can we replace the windows at Doolittle? Can we replace the roof at Doolittle? As part of this, they'll also look at, are there any types of grants, including school construction grants, or monies under the Inflation Reduction Act, that might help further offset our costs and allow us to do larger projects, including solar? So, the next step, and there's no cost to the board, to the town, to go to this RFP stage. In fact, the only time we would pay Energia that's leading this effort is if we actually sign an Energy Performance Contract, which we're not obligated to do if we don't like it, but if we sign one, then Energia would get paid as part of that Energy Performance Contract. So, there is no risk, and it's a no-cost way to determine, can we make infrastructure improvements? So, that next step will take place over the next month or so. We already have a draft of the RFP, which we're looking at, and then we are going to send it to the Planning Committee, so that they can take a look at it before it's actually issued. And what, if I can continue with just one more final update on what we would, what we discussed at that meeting, and that is the work that we're doing this summer. We are, went out to bid, we're replacing the two boilers at Doolittle, you know, which are a little over twenty years old. The big one this summer is the Cheshire High School West Gym. Lockers are being renovated. That is the last major project under the ADA compliance, that the board members, Mr. Perigini is laughing, because this is something that's been going on for more than a decade to complete all the work that was identified in a review that was done in 2009. So, this is the last major project. We'll finally have that done. Again, we went out to bid, and we have bids that, you know, will work. We're We're also about 25% done with the Dodd Fire Alarm Replacement. That's happening after hours. I don't think the staff even knows that it's happening, because it is happening in the evenings, and that project's going well. And then the last thing I wanted to mention is that this summer, we are working and we're pretty confident that we will be doing some initial site work at Norton to prepare for the new schools. So that site work includes cutting in the entry road off of Sharon Drive, installing a culvert that's required there, and also doing some site work and putting up some fencing on the back end of Norton where it's relatively close to where the new school will be built. And the reason we want to do it this summer is so that we don't have to have this type of site work going on in December when construction is expected to begin. So by doing it this summer, we won't have to worry about, you know, the students and the staff dealing with this initial site work. So that was all I wanted to add. Thank you, Mr. Ecki.
Thank you. Are there any questions on these three areas on the Planning Committee? The portable classrooms, the Energy Performance Contract, and the summer work, including the work at Norton School? Mr. White?
Thank you. So just a comment, because I don't think it was explicitly made. What we are doing is we're looking at the Energy Performance Contract, which I think is a great idea, Vin. Thank you for doing that. But we're looking at that on a parallel track with school modernization. They're not happening in independent vacuums. And also, just to confirm, with regard to Norton site work, there's going to be access from Sharon Drive to the backside of Norton School? Is there going to be a walking area in there? There's kids who are probably going to end up using it. Is that the plan, is what I'm wondering?
Yes. So the plan is initially, the Sharon Drive access will be for construction only.
Mm-hmm.
When the new school is open in August, or September, actually, of 2026, the Sharon Drive will be an exit for buses and delivery vehicles. No walking there until November of 2026. So a couple of months after the new school is open, then that will become an emergency entrance and exit only, and we will allow pedestrian traffic. So students, parents can walk from Sharon Drive to the new school building. So eventually, it's absolutely a walking area, and that's in addition to the walking area from Farmington Drive that already exists. That will be improved as part of the new school construction.
So obviously, the entrance off of Brooksville, too?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm just wondering, is that realistic for kids who live right there? That they're not going to be walking? Means there's going to be a fence or a no trespass? I'm just saying, I'm not saying put in a sidewalk and then it gets torn up. My request is simply that it's made in a realist, you take it realistically, and kids who live on Sharon Drive may very well just be cutting through there. That's it.
That was, actually, I'll let Dr. Solan address it, because it reviews it this week.
Yeah, I met with Fire Chief Kazner about this yesterday, our construction people. You know, we're sensitive to that, too, so we'll be prohibiting that, you know, actively discouraging people from going, entering or exiting the building on Sharon Drive. We don't have to worry about that now, because you don't walk through the woods and the water. But when there is actual access for those couple of months, and that's really all it'll be, from the start of the school year in '26 until Thanksgiving.
Oh, wait, it's not happening, I was thinking that it was happening this summer.
Right. You won't be able to access the property, though, because of the fencing.
Okay.
Yeah. So, I mean, you could, you might be able to get in, no, you wouldn't even be able to get in there until we open up for construction. And then even if you could get into the property, you can't get to the school, because it'll be fenced off.
Okay. I just envisioned, like, a chain running across, like, 20 feet.
Please don't come in here.
Don't come in here. That's not going to work.
I see what you're saying. You're talking about when we cut that road in.
Yes.
So students this year come back in August, construction doesn't begin till December. So during that period of time, we'll, we'll try and prevent that.
Okay.
But to your point, you know, there might be students that walk through the woods, for all I know, to get to school right now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
The other thing is, you know, we're planning cameras for both sites.
Okay.
Not necessarily as much for security, but as much as for education and interest, to be able to see the construction going on. We've talked about having, at least at Norton, holes in the fence, I shouldn't say holes in the fence, but visibility through the fence for kids to be able to observe the construction going on.
What I've seen is, what I've seen is chain-linked fences with a fabric over it. The fabric has a cut in it, so you can peek through it, but then the dust isn't flying everywhere.
Yeah. They'll, they know that we want to be able to do that, and so they're building into that, add into the process.
And I think those fences, I mean, they put up fencing around construction areas, because you have to keep people. It's dangerous. So I assume we'll have all the, all the fencing that we need.
Temporary fencing.
Yes, exactly. Any other questions? Go ahead, Adam.
Thank you. I kind of missed the first part of Mr. Ecki's report about the trailers.
Portable classroom.
I'm sorry, portable classrooms. I know, was that, was that last night or two nights ago?
Two nights ago.
Where you discussed how Highland is up to, like, 900 students now. So is, are the portable classrooms imminent? Or, and I know we were looking at, we were going to purchase or repurpose something in order to do that, or what's the, what were you thinking there?
So we originally thought that we could buy the trailer that's at Daco, which is a triple-wide, repurpose it from the bus depot, bring it to Highland and use that as portable classroom. But for a number of reasons, that isn't going to work, and actually, cost is one of them. So we issued an RFP. We can get two portable classrooms, you know, delivered and installed, minus site work, because that's going to be separate, for $252,000. We have a budget of $450,000. So confident that we can get those two new portable classrooms onsite for, you know, within our budget, which is really, really good news. We need to move quickly at this point, because, you know, we did, we are going to go forward. It's not a question of are we buying them or leasing them, but after meeting with the Planning Committee, we think just buying them makes a lot more sense, maybe cost-effective even after we're done with them, if we decide to sell them off. Our history, you know, here in Cheshire has not been really good about us getting rid of portables once they're onsite, even if we use these new ones as storage after we're done with them as classrooms, and that wouldn't happen until the new schools are built. We know, and the Planning Committee has been working on this for over a year. We've been looking at enrollment. It continues to climb. There's no reason to believe it isn't going to continue to climb further. We have 600 new apartment units that are either built or in the construction phase.
608 units.
And 188 houses or townhouses that are either under construction or will be completed over the next two years. So we will not have enough room, even if we increase class sizes dramatically at Highland. We have to do it. And the new developments right now are being redirected to Chapman from that north end. So there is no school, that's an elementary school, that, you know, has room. So the portable classrooms are an important stopgap. We have to do it. There's no doubt. We met with, we, Dr. Solan and I met with Mike Liddon, the town planner. You know, he ran through the status of construction of these apartments and the houses, and there's certainly going to be more students coming. We're at somewhere above 4,200 now. The projection is to have about 4,900 students, you know, by the time, you know, we get to the 10th year. So I'm not sure that, you know, those portables aren't going to be around for a while.
So we're anticipating starting next year with the portables?
Looking to get those done for the start of school in August, absolutely. The Planning Committee has made it very, very clear what needs to be done. Now, I think the only, you know, we have some stages that we have to go through here in town to get approval from inland wetlands, planning and zoning, you know, get a building permit. So we have had the professionals hired, you know, for the last couple of months, so we've got everything staged. We're, you know, working to get everything pulled together so that we can go, you know, to submit our application and get the planning and zoning second meeting in April.
So also, at one point, we were talking about having the portables at two different schools. Are they both going, planning to be at Highland at this point?
Yes. We just, we did, we did hire Antonazi Associates to look at, can we add portables at Doolittle? Can we add portables at Highland? But after looking at where enrollment was going, we think we'll be okay if we add the two portable classrooms at Highland. Things may get tight, but this will give us the capacity to get through. We're just trying to get through two years.
Yeah. And that was, my question was, so we won't have to redistrict for those two years?
We're trying not to do that, because we know that that's very disruptive. Other than directing the new development to Chapman, there's no plan to just do some stopgap redistricting at this point.
Right. Mr. Grippo?
I'll just blurt out my questions, then I'll peel back here. So as a point of comparison, and it's not really fair to ask this, but if you know off the top of your head, a cost-per-square-foot comparison between adding portable classrooms versus having to add classrooms to our new schools, is that I'm guessing it's cheaper for portable classrooms? That's question one. Question two is, when does our current performance contract expire? And do we know, do we have any idea of what the new performance contract would cost per year? And lastly, it looked like in the, in the final iteration of Norton that there are a lot less trees. Was that a correct assumption by just me looking at drawings? So I'm also...
Well, I'll start backwards. Yes, there are less, there are some less trees. Part of that is just a cost, a cost measure. And, you know, from a facilities maintenance point of view, you know, we do want to always keep in mind that we have to maintain the property, maintain the trees, plow the snow. So that's something that is certainly, you know, part of our discussion. But there certainly will be, you know, landscaping and trees. It's not going to be barren. With respect to the question about the, the cost-per-square-foot of a portable versus, you know, adding on to the new schools, I guess I want to answer this question in two parts. The, you know, adding on to the new schools, I'm assuming it's clear that that's not going to help us, right? We're just trying to get through the next two years. So we don't have an option other than to go to portables right now. And I think the cost-per-square-foot to add to the building is certainly higher than the portables, but you're also getting, you know, 50 years of life out of, you know, an extension to the building. Right now, there isn't any active discussion about having to increase the size of the new school buildings. I don't, I don't think we're there. You know, what we do know is, once the new schools are open and we redistrict, we estimate that Highland's population will be brought down to 725. So we will have some additional capacity at Highland after the new schools are built and redistricted. So even if we saw a spike in enrollment above what was projected, we do have some room without going down the road of adding to the new buildings right now. And then, on the Energy Performance Contract, we're in year 10, and it's a 15-year contract, so we have five more years of payments to go. That was a $10.2 million contract. The initial estimate from Energia is we could do a $6 million contract, but I just want to emphasize, that's really a rough estimate. You know, maybe we'll find that we can do a larger project. Maybe we, maybe it has to be smaller, maybe $6 million is the right number. So, you know, as of right now, it seems that would be a slightly smaller project than what we did, you know, back in two, in 10 years ago now. Did I get them all?
Excellent. Thank you.
Mr. White, you have some questions?
With regard to, with regard to the performance contract, I'm thinking in terms of both issuing an RFP and signing a contract, for either of those two events, does the board and/or the council vote?
Well, okay.
It's, I didn't, I didn't think it would be complicated.
Sign the Energy Performance Contract, that absolutely has to be approved by the council.
Okay.
Because essentially, we're entering into
Yep.
A lease. That's what it is. But that would certainly come, you know, before the board, because the board would have to look at, what improvements would we be making to the billing? So in terms of process, when this RFP is issued and we receive the proposals back, I know I'd explained this to the Planning Committee, what we did last time is we pulled together a group of Board of Ed members, Town Council members, Energy Commission, there was at least one member that I remember, and we looked at this together, you know, to get consensus and to get thoughts from all the bodies as to, is, does this make sense? Is it a good idea? And we did go forward, obviously, and we signed an Energy Performance Contract 10 years ago. So I would envision, and I'd certainly, you know, recommend that we follow a process along the same lines.
So the, the RFP doesn't have any necessar, doesn't require any votes?
No.
And the executing a contract would require a council vote and would definitely include Board of Ed input, if not a vote, something along those lines?
Yeah.
Okay. And with regard to the, just to elaborate a little bit on what you were saying about the sort of study committee, the review committee, that basically is, tell me if I'm wrong on this, it's, it's a list of thousands of ECMs or Energy Conservation Measures, and it could be light bulbs in this room, it could be an HVAC at the high school. All these things get broken down into very little pieces, and just sort of look at a payback on it. We estimate a three-year payback on this light bulb, we estimate a 25-year payback on this window. What are we looking at? How do we window this down to make it a contract that we can work with? Something along those lines?
That's exactly what it is. You described it perfectly. And they are ECMs, that's what we called them last time. I don't know if the terminology's changed, but we, we did have a laundry list, and we pared that down. We didn't go forward with, with everything.
And so some of the stuff that gets looked at this time may be stuff that could be done again because of improvements in technology, or it may be stuff that didn't make sense to do back then, but now it does. And it may not only be related to energy, it could be related to mechanical failure of a window.
Correct.
But you can bake that into the contract.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on, for the Planning Committee? Great. Let's move on to policy. Thank you, Mr. Masianna. Thank you to Mr. Ecki. The Planning Committee has been busy, busy, busy. Policy Committee, Mr. Ecki, do you have a report?
I do. We met on March 4th. We were speaking about several different policies, including the sports, the status level sports program, talking about how to make a club into a varsity sport. We are giving a second reading to that policy, 6145.21, Status Level Sports Program. status level sports program. Just talking about, we tweaked a little bit of the language on that. We also discussed the draft and equity, draft equity and diversity policy. We looked at several different policies from different towns, as well as Cabs, and Dr. Solan is going to draft a new one. We didn't, we didn't like the, we thought that it could be a, a little bit clearer. So we're gonna use some, uh, different language. Dr. Solan's gonna get back to us with that. We also discussed the draft civility policy. And again, we're making some modifications to that one before we bring that one forward. For today, or for tonight, we have the third reading of several policies, third and final reading. Gonna make a motion that the Cheshire Board of Education give a third and final reading to policies two-one-three-two, Assistant Superintendent for Instructional Services, five-one-one-one, admission slash placement, five-one-one-two, ages of attendance, and bylaw nine-two-three-zero, new board member orientation, and direct the superintendent to put said policies into immediate effect.
Great. Do I have a second on that motion? Mr. Grippo, thank you. Any discussion on any of those policies that I believe have not been, had any changes since the second reading, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I think we're ready to vote on the motion that the Cheshire Board of Education give a third and final reading to policies, number two-one-three-two, Assistant Superintendent for Instructional Services, number five-one-one-one, admission slash placement, number five-one-one-two, ages of attendance, and bylaw number nine-two-three-zero, new board member orientation, and direct the superintendent to put said policies into immediate effect. All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Anything else for the policy committee? Are there any other standing committees that need to be addressed? I didn't, I didn't see any. Thank you. Next, let's, on the agenda is to approve the minutes. We have two meetings, one for January fifteenth and one for March seventh. I've been advised that we approve these two minute, meeting minutes separately, so that if anybody was missing from those meetings and want to abstain, that way we don't have too many abstentions to get the minutes passed. So would somebody like to make a motion for the first one? Mr. Grippo, thank you.
Move that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the meeting held on February fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four.
Thank you. Do I have a second on that one? Second. I've got Mr. Ecki. I saw him first, sorry. Is there any discussion on the, or, or alterations for those minutes? Mr. Grippo?
I just wanted to make a comment, a, or a thank you to Mr. Juzenski, who I'm assuming writes up the minutes, for the accurate portrayal of events for our dispirited discussion of the elimination of Columbus Day. I thought that it was captured for all posterity for anyone who's interested. Thank you.
Anything else for those minutes? Seeing none, let's take a vote that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the meeting held on February fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four. All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. And the next motion. Mr. Grippo, you want to try that one, too?
Sure. Move that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the meeting held on March seventh, twenty-twenty-four.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that one? Mr. White, thank you. I'm sorry?
He's sitting behind the gray wall in China.
I need a clicker or something. I, I can see her just fine. Great. The Board of Education minutes on March seventh. So I have a second on that, right? That was Mr. White. That was the meeting, the showcase meeting at Dodd Middle School. And I would just make the comment that I want to thank Ms. Kelly Grillo and her team at Dodd Middle School. It was a great showcase meeting of how to engage students in a classroom. And it's no surprise, we have different students today than we had back in the day when I was in school. And we got a very nice video show of sort of a traditional classroom style. And then, we got to engage in using whiteboards and being on teams, small groups, and engaging in that very interactive classroom experience. So I just wanted to thank all of those at Dodd Middle School who I know spent a lot of time preparing those for that meeting, for, to be able to show us that. Mr. Grippo?
I just wanted to thank Dr. Solan for including the video. I think it was sent out the next day or the day after, because it was an excellent presentation. And that hopefully, if parents are interested to know what's going on in our classrooms, I think that's a great one to watch.
Thank you. Any, any other comments or questions, or changes to those minutes? Then I will bring forth the motion that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the meeting held on March seventh, twenty-twenty-four. All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is correspondence. Mr. Grippo, is there any correspondence to be read?
Let me just check real quick. I want to say no.
You can always look over to our right at Ms. Juzenski.
Okay.
We're good.
Then we're all set. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And then we have the superintendent's report. Mr.?
Thank you very much. Just want to hit on a number of, of items. On March eighth, I had the opportunity to introduce and recognize our Cheshire Public Schools Teacher of the Year, Catherine Zuccus, who's a first grade teacher at Norton School, at the Chamber of Commerce Dinner. About three hundred-plus people in attendance at that, and it was a really nice event, and appreciate the relationship we have, not only with the chamber, but the individual members. We really are humbled by the work that the community does to support our school system, and just wanted to acknowledge them. On March fourteenth, building off of that middle school showcase that you saw, we had all of the instructional folks in the Cheshire Public Schools at Cheshire High School to go through next-level work as it relates to making your thinking visible, visible, and, and providing engaging instruction. And the teachers were broken up into small groups and led by, you know, our central office team, our building administrators, our reading and math specialists throughout the district. And the afternoon was really phenomenal. We had a lot of positive feedback. So I want to just take the opportunity again, I know I've done it before, and it's, it's worth repeating. Kevin in attendance tonight, and, and Marlene, in particular, do a tremendous job. Kevin put, I can't tell you how many hours into scripting it so that the, every classroom had the same experience, which is hard to do for four hundred people. Moreover, they had the same general experience, but we also tailored it in such a way that we recognized that our teachers, just like our students, kind of have different entry points. So they were given choices of mild, medium, and spicy. We even had salsa for them, you know, that you could, if you were relatively new to this sort of practice, you could engage in the mild. And, you know, if you had a little bit more comfort, medium. And obviously, if you were an advanced, you know, person with experience, you could try something a little bit more spicy for your kids. And so, a lot of great collaboration that day. And I know sometimes people think, well, you know, what are we doing on PD Day? And what we're doing is coaching people on the strategies that you guys saw at the middle school showcase, the elementary showcase, and you'll just see the spicy at the high school showcase next, in May. So thank you again to Kevin and, and Marlene, and the team that you guys lead to make that work so successful. With respect to school modernization, Vin already hit on a few things. We're motoring through, I would, what I guess I would consider the local compliance aspect of this. Inland, wetlands blessings at both locations. Planning and zoning is wrapping up at Norton, approved at North End. And I have invited the members of the board for a joint meeting on April eleventh with the Next Gen School Building Committee. It'll be brief, but basically, the board at that meeting will be asked to approve the plan, you know, some of the stuff that Vin talked about for the summer, the site work at, at both locations. Laurel from ONG and our folks from Tacton will walk you through that. You know, it should be a quick approval, and then move on. The town council will also be approving the, the same work. So, and just to be clear, you are welcome to come in person. We are moving that meeting to the Board of Ed conference room. You can also participate remotely if you choose. Just let us know if you're going to do that so we have the appropriate equipment set up for you. I wanted to clarify, there was a picture in the New Haven Register, and ran again in the Herald, that inaccurately indicated the design for the new Norton. I just want to be sure that you guys know and that the public knows, that's not the new design for Norton. It was an old design. And anytime anybody has a question, the most accurate information can always be found on the Cheshire Public Schools website, bottom left-hand corner, School Modernization. All sorts of information there, including the most up-to-date designs. I want to thank Emery Cullen for coming and committing time today. She and I, along with Kevin and some others, interviewed with the Connecticut Association of Schools. We're really proud that Scott Jeffrey is a finalist for the Connecticut Elementary School Principal of the Year. A well-deserved recognition. I know a lot of you know Scott and his, are familiar with his work. And so we were excited to have the opportunity to talk about the great work that he does. Want to congratulate Scott regardless of how it goes. He's, he's certainly an asset for our students and community. So congratulations to Scott. The, just a, a quick personal plug, I was asked to write an article for the Compass Magazine. It's a, a school leadership magazine. And the article that I co-wrote with Mark Benigni is on the cover of that magazine. For, I'm sure everybody here is a subscriber, so I feel stupid, like, seems a little redundant. Who doesn't read that Compass Magazine for District HR professionals? But I figured I'd mention it anyway. And then finally, and certainly net, last but not least, I, I just want to take a moment to thank all of the members of the Board of Education for your work and dedication during this Board Member Appreciation Month. You guys, I, you know, I never really appreciated, even though I would always attend board meetings and things like that, I didn't go to committee meetings. I never got the emails when I wasn't superintendent. But I realize the time commitment that you put in, the personal energy, and the, and the thought and consideration that is behind the important work that you do, is very much appreciated. And I know, you know, you often tile, toil in silence and don't get a lot of recognition. And I just want to take this time on behalf of Vin, Marlene, and everybody in the Cheshire Public Schools to say thank you for the work that you do, and happy Board Member Appreciation Month. That's it. That's it for me.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any questions for Dr. Solan? Mr. White?
Better not be, where's my gift, Tim?
Where's my check?
Yeah, where's your check? The legislature's working on that. Tony, you know that.
So I do have a couple of questions, but the first thing that I don't think I caught was right to read.
Yeah, I try not to talk about that. It's not good. Doctor told me to stop. But I appreciate you asking the question nevertheless. So, you know, this has really been a bit of a roller coaster and challenging. I appreciate the time and, and work that you put into questioning really great questions to Representative Curry, who's the Chair of the Education Committee in Hartford. I think he, he believed that the SDE was in a position to be more flexible. I think, you know, the SDE sees things a little bit differently. We are still working and advocating pretty tirelessly. The whole situation was complicated by the passing of a couple of individuals closely connected to that deliberation, which made things much more complicated. And we're still advocating, still working with SDE. I remain steadfast in my belief that the curriculum that we have created closely aligns to the science of reading, and that given the opportunity to go through that, I mean, yeah, we are not explicitly using the programs that they've prescribed. But given the opportunity to go through our curriculum, I feel confident that we would be able to demonstrate that we meet the law. And so we are continuing down that path. Now, we don't have to have anything in place until July twenty-twenty-five, so there's still runway. And it's our sincere hope that we'll be able to work in a collaborative fashion with SDE to find a, a middle ground on this situation.
Thank you. A couple of questions or comments. I was hoping Marlene would be here tonight, because I did have a conversation with her about right to read. I had some feedback from a parent who told me she thought we should, the right to read should force us to create a new curriculum. I can't articulate this well, but in short, she feels we should have a greater emphasis on phonics. And she felt that, not only with her child, but with the children of other parents, she felt that there's this sort of shortcoming. I asked Marlene about it. I'm curious to know if, if you could agree with this or not, or correct me where I'm wrong. But the general understanding I've gotten from you is that our right to read equivalent, our curriculum, we started about ten years ago. In that ten years, there's been more data, including saying that phonics probably is, should have, there should be a stronger emphasis on phonics. What I understood Marlene to say was, where we started ten years ago with our curriculum is not where we are today. And she felt that particularly in relation to the Curriculum Writing Institute, the summer program you do?
Right.
There has been a greater emphasis placed on phonics in probably the past three years since we've been doing that. Is that a fair way to put it? For a, a parent who is concerned, saying effectively, you know, we're failing on the phonics portion for a small portion of kids, but still some of these kids, and she felt a greater emphasis on the phonics would improve that, she felt right to read would force us to make that improvement to phonics. What Marlene was saying was, as of a few years ago, that may have been true, but it's not true today. And I'll also point out that I think this student is probably a few years beyond this.
Sure.
Beyond where that would have mattered. beyond where that would have mattered, so I'm just curious if you could speak to what I'm saying. And I certainly don't want to put any words in Marlene's mouth, I was wishing she'd be here, but that's the general idea I got from the parent from Marlene.
Two quick points. First of all, right to read wouldn't necessarily force us to do more phonics, it would force us to adopt a program that frankly doesn't have the backing of research that says it's successful. That's the first problem. The second point, I believe to be accurate, that the, when we began really emphasizing the science of reading and following research, you know, a lot of, everything that we do is grounded in research. We have a lot of smart people who have a lot of good hunches, but we don't necessarily, not that we don't take any intellectual risks, but we take those risks following research. And the research, we do adapt and modify what we do over time, and certainly, you know, there has been a greater shift toward phonics. To, I also want to address the point that if there are people, anybody, I don't care if it's about phonics or math or, you know, anything, that if there's a question, if there's a concern, first I would suggest that they speak to their principal. Ultimately, you know, when the concerns are really specialized, somebody like Kevin will be happy to spend a lot of time with, and I say that knowing he has spent time. And so, you know, Kevin, I know you've spent a lot of time on this, I don't know if you want to take a second to talk to the concern about the, or talk about any shifts we've made in curriculum? I know I'm putting you on the spot, but, you know.
Thank you. I think as Marlene and I have planned and through CWI, I do think what's said is largely accurate. We have had phonics as one of the pillars in our curriculum for a very long time, but through our own self-study, we saw that some of the students who weren't being successful reading-wise, that this was a gap area that they had. So, we have, over successive iterations of CWI, elevated this part of our practice. It was always there in the curriculum, but it wasn't necessarily done in a way that every classroom across the district in a pretty systematic way would get the same experience. So, we've done that work over several years. One of the things that I'll add on, you've had a little bit of experience at the beginning stages of that work at a elementary showcase a few years ago, where you were doing something called the Bridge Model, which is a foundational piece of that phonics work. We also continue to work on some skills that precede the phonics instruction, and that's phonemic awareness, because this is another related area, the sounds themselves. And Jeff talked a little bit about our afternoon PD and our morning PD. We had 100 pre-K through four teachers together at Cheshire High School, honing our practice on phonemic awareness in a very similar way to what we worked on phonics. So, this is, these are areas where we have tended to, they have been in our curriculum, but where we see in our own results, we're not quite where we want to be, we keep on addressing it. So I would say what Marlene shared with you is very much true. We've elevated these parts of our practice, brought them to the forefront, found more routine and systematic ways to make sure that all students have a shared experience and get this instruction.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I do have another question. To the superintendent, touched on it, I touched on it at the DOD showcase, but I just want to bring it up again, which is, for kids who are in DOD, do we, as a school system, have any sort of connection with high schools besides Cheshire High? Do we connect the kids at DOD? Do we even make them aware of, are there open houses at some of the other technical schools, voag schools in the area?
Sure, we notify families of those opportunities, the open houses that those schools hold, but we also give presentations, and we've had a fair number of students elect Will Cox for technical education. We have students at the Sound School in New Haven for aquaculture. We have students at Lyman Hall for agricultural education. So, and actually, that number, it's not a big number, but it's steadily, I wouldn't say steadily growing, because it's not so much larger, but there are certainly students that are accessing that. We also have students that have accessed the Educational Center for the Arts, which is a afternoon program. So students attend CHS in the morning, get on a bus and go to the Arts Magnet School in New Haven for the afternoon. So, those opportunities, we do educate our kids about the diversity. Just today, I was talking to Jason Venies and Jill Silverman, they were a big part of what we did last summer in terms of open houses at local mechanical.
Richard Chevy?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Richard Chevy, but also, we were at East Coast Mechanical, we were at Marion Manufacturing. Students really loved that, took advantage of it. Our local manufacturing folks and technical skilled operations really appreciated it. We look forward to doing that again this year. So, we've evolved in our awareness programs. I think, you know, part of what we're hoping to do with the pre-engineering and environmental science programs at the elementary, the grades that you guys put into the budget this year is continue that connection and awareness and spark interest for kids. So, yeah, we're always conscious of that, knowing that, you know, when you look at the 10 highest-paying jobs out of college, eight of them are engineering, you know, the other two are medical. And so, we're, you know, some form of engineering, you know, nuclear versus mechanical versus whatever, but, you know, we're definitely aware of that.
Yeah, thank you. And I know you're, I know you're very aware of my view on pathways post-high school, but some of those pathways can begin even earlier. And just to be clear, I don't expect those numbers to probably ever get big. My best view into this is me as an eighth grader and thinking about where I wanted to go to high school and study was the last thing on my mind. I just wanted to hang out with my friends. So I get it, I don't expect that there would be, but to at least plant a seed, and maybe something happens over time, so.
Sure.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Anything else for Dr. Solon? Mr. Grippo?
For the meeting in April, I'm guessing we'll have a packet to review ahead of time?
Yes.
So, to avoid inevitable, we're going to have questions anyway.
You're going to have questions.
Say it quick, I don't know if you mean that in jest.
No, that wasn't sarcastic, but the meeting, we have another meeting next Thursday to discuss that further. So they're in the process of designing documents and, you know, providing you that information.
And just as a comment to not condemn before anything happens, but I hope that the legislature has the intestinal fortitude to perhaps fix something that they're responsible for. So, instead of letting someone else fix it for them, because they can do that.
There's a lot of finger pointing going back and forth between SDE and the legislature at the moment. Tony has a.
Mr. Paragini?
Adam, I could tell you, spending time in Hartford, that's not going to happen. It's not. But we do have ears of some legislators, so I think just continue behind that. But regarding the information for the joint meeting, for, if we haven't, for board members that haven't been following the NGSC over the last couple of years, there's a lot of information. Definitely read up the materials on the Next Generation School website, and I would say the sooner we get some materials ahead of time, maybe we can send in questions ahead of time, just so that we're not rehashing two years' worth of discussions in one night. But I'm sure it'll be fine, but it's an exciting step. I mean, it's like a 15-year journey.
We're actually doing something, right? It's so exciting, like, we're actually.
I'm sure it'll go smoothly, but I think it'll be good information, so thank you for helping prepare that.
Yeah, so March 28th is our next meeting of that committee, and they're certainly aware of the April 11th meeting with you, and so we'll make sure that you have some information in advance.
Anything else? Great, that wraps up the superintendent's report. Yes?
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is old business, and I have nothing on the agenda for old business, so we will move on to new business and thank the very patient Erica for sitting here for a couple of hours for her turn at the mic. So, under new business, we have the healthy food certification, we have three separate motions that need to be made, they're long, and we will bear through it together. But first, Mr. Maciana is going to begin the report on this item and bring Erica into the, into the food services discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Harren. I will try and summarize this as briefly as I can. The three motions that are before the board this evening, we're recommending that we continue with healthy food certification, which we have been participating in for many, many years here in the state of Connecticut. 96% of school districts in Connecticut do participate in this program. Besides the fact that it's good for students and it's the right thing to do, there is a financial component. We do receive 10 cents per reimbursable meal by participating in this program. Round numbers, it's about $40,000 a year for the food service program. The three motions, essentially what they do, the first motion is the board agreeing to allow us to participate in the healthy food certification program. And just to make sure that I explain it, this does not apply to the reimbursable breakfast and lunch meals. Those have to meet all the guidelines. This is for everything that we sell à la carte, including beverages that are not part of a reimbursable meal. And just to give you a little bit of flavor, so any snack that we sell, chips, pretzels, trail mix, cookies, cereal bars, the standards have to be met, and the standards, they will, they're unbelievably detailed, and we get updates from the state at least once a week of items that are added to the list and items that no longer meet the requirements for calories. Can't be more than 200 calories as a snack, no more than 35% of the calories have, can come from fat, less than 10% saturated fat, no trans fat, no more than 35% of sugars by weight, 15 grams of sugar. The list goes on and on, it's two pages just for snacks. And of course, there's exemptions, like to the fat, low-fat or reduced-fat, 100% natural cheese, including part-skim mozzarella, that's exempt from the fat standard. So, it's really technical, and the board members that have been, you know, here for years know that I've talked about food service and complying with food service is extremely technical. So the first motion is, we're going to participate in healthy food certification for our non-reimbursable meals, but then the next two motions are the exemptions that need to be approved. And all these exemptions do is allow us to sell food at the concession stand, for example, at Cheshire High School, or 30 minutes after school is over, if there's a fundraiser that's being held in the school, this, these two exemptions allow us to do that.
So this is, this is for the triple B?
So that is the background that I wanted to provide.
Okay, you ready for the motions? Could I have Ms. Cullenan read the motions, because she has a lovely reading voice, and I prefer to hear her speak now.
Trying to make up.
I'm trying to make up, ignoring her earlier. Thank you.
Move that pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section 10-215F. The Cheshire Board of Education certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in the schools under its jurisdiction and not exempted from the Connecticut Nutrition Standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Ed will comply with the Connecticut Nutrition Standards during the period of July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025. This certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times and from all sources, including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, culinary programs, and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by the school or by non-school organizations and groups.
Do I have a second to that motion? Mr. Grippo, thank you. Is there any discussion or questions? Seeing none, I would like to call for approval of motion number one that Ms. Cullenan just read. All in favor? Thank you, it's unanimous. Ms. Cullenan, motion number two for food exemptions.
Move that the Cheshire Board of Education will allow the sale to students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut Nutrition Standards provided that the following conditions are met. Number one, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Second, the sale is at the location of the event. And third, the food items are not sold from a vending machine or school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice, meeting, or extracurricular activity. For example, soccer games, school plays, and interscholastic debates are events, but soccer practices, play rehearsals, and debate meetings are not. The regular school day is a period from midnight before to 30 minutes after the end of the official school day. Location means where the event is being held and must be the same place as the food sales.
Very thorough. Do I have a second, Mr. Paragini? Any questions on the motion number two? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you, the motion passes. And motion number three for beverage exemptions, Ms. Cullenan?
Yep. Move that the Cheshire Board of Education will allow the sale to students of beverages not listed in Section 10-221Q of the Connecticut General Statutes, provided that the following conditions are met. The first, that the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Two, the sale is at the location of the event. And three, the beverages are not sold from a vending machine or a school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice, meeting, or extracurricular activity. The school day is a period from midnight before to 30 minutes after the end of the official school day, and location means where the event is being held and must be the same place as the beverage sales.
Thank you. Do I have a second for the motion number three? Mr. Ecki? Any questions, further questions on motion number three? Thank you. So, I will put the motion to a vote. All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the reading, Ms. Cullen. Okay, what else do you have for us on Chapman composting?
So now, I will ask Erica to come and present. I will just tee it up to let you know that the, last August, the town council appropriated $11,100 from the funds that they received from the state for the five-cent NIP dollars. We, I think the council at that time had 17,000. They provided 11,100 to do this Chapman composting pilot. And with that, Eric, I know there's a handout that's been prepared, and Erica has done a great job running this pilot, and she will give you the update as of now.
Thank you very much, Vin. And thank you, everyone. And I didn't know it was Board Member Month, but now that I do, I brought snacks, because they're very important. And just so you know, even the bottled water that we sell, the spring water, has to be on the healthy food certification. So they go as much, as far down as making sure that, verifying the water that we sell. And just so you know, this is on the list, the one I have. So, we were very excited on January 5th, we were able to kick off our composting pilot at Chapman with the town. We were able to kick off our composting pilot at Chapman with the town, as Vinnie explained the money, and it went very well. You have some pictures. Diana, who was here before, she's not with us now, put together and had the students write letters about what composting meant to them, so that certain students in every grade were then selected, and those were our composting champions. So, they were able to help and initiate and work with all the other students to teach and train everyone on the new way to throw out all of their items. And it was a very great day, and we've been having a lot of success there going forward. So, you'll see on the handout was what we had for the estimates in the beginning, as I'm kind of jumping right into the actual startup of it. You can see the estimates. We ended up having four stations for the students, as well as two pole carts for the kindergartners, since they do remain seated. But we wanted them to be able to be included in the entire composting. We visited some schools, and they weren't able to include all grades in the school, and we did want to make sure that everyone had a participating hand in composting. We have Blue Earth, who picks up twice a week. That's in line with our trash refuse. The second paper you can see is our very fun definition of what to compost. We, since we use Blue Earth, we're able to do anaerobic digestion composting, so they take all meat and dairy. So, we can combine a lot of our food, and we're able to compost more with them as the service. So, they throw their empty water bottles, as I brought my sample, into a recycling bin, and then milk, juice, and any of the plastic containers, and the packaging for the food goes into trash. And then all of the food, organic waste itself, as well as the five-compartment tray that is made of compostable material. So, they dump all their food onto their tray, they take their tray, and they throw their tray into the composting bin. So, this way, it's kind of a little bit of fun, because they get to dump all their food out, but we prefer that they eat their food. That is the main goal. I should state that for the record. We love to compost and reduce food waste. What's better than reducing food waste is having it be consumed by the student. That is our number one preference. But if they do not want to eat it all, we are very happy to reduce waste. So, step three is obviously the composting. We have the color-coded bins, which made it very easy for them, blue recycling, black for trash, and green for composting. And we have been able to compost eight thousand one hundred and ninety-five pounds from January fifth until March fourteenth. So, Blue Earth makes this very nice graphic that I've included for all of you to see all the work that we've done there. So far, we're very happy. It has been a somewhat seamless transition after the initial week. But it's been great.
Do we have questions for Vin or Erica? Go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say thank you for getting this rolled out. I'm chuckling, because I'm sure Fiona is very proud of the last couple of years, actually not, about a year and a half. I know she's been working, Pamela, I believe, to-
Yeah.
-help us get going, so this is great. And glad to see the kids learning these skills, because it will benefit them. So, it's, thank you. I know there's a lot going on in the schools, especially the food program, without this, but I appreciate the fact that you're able to get this in as well with everything else. So, thank you for the good work.
Thank you very much. The way we have it structured, and we did go and visit a bunch of other schools, and our method seems to work very well for our students, and it has them being able to seamlessly throw the items in the garbage, which is not a huge disruption. I know one of my main concerns is that we didn't lose any lunchtime, and that students were consuming their food and not rushing to throw it out to do that task. But we have not, we didn't even need the additional staff, which we were monitoring. We were there for the whole first week. We did give out stickers on the kickoff day. That was very exciting. Everyone who composted got a sticker, and it was definitely the highlight of the day for the students.
I would just say, I'm happy to hear that you're not making composting so much fun that we don't want to eat our food, we want to just compost it. But in seriousness, I have questions about, are we going to continue doing this for a while?
So, we have the pilot for the eleven thousand, so we're monitoring it through the rest of this year and seeing what the total waste is and what the costs are, and then being able to reevaluate and come back at the end of the year.
Do you think we'll be able to stick within that eleven thousand budget?
I do. I'm very hopeful that we will be able to. This has only been a half-a-year projection, since we were only able to start in January. Some of the setup costs were a little bit more to make sure we had enough containers for all the students, but it has been a big part of the success, so I wouldn't have changed the way we're doing it. But I am hopeful we'll definitely be able to make it through. We estimated through June would be seven thousand seven hundred and thirty, roughly, depending on the amount of waste over the next couple of months.
If I can just take a moment to add to that. So, you know, one of the, the reason we wanted to do this as a pilot is, you know, A, so that we could get a better handle on the logistics, you know. One thing that, you know, was very important, you know, to Erica and has staff, is not slowing the kids down. We have limited time to get through lunch, and we didn't want, you know, this sorting to take too much time, which is why we're using compostable trays. It actually makes it a lot, not only quicker, but neater. And our custodians have reported that it has been a very neat process, which we're really happy about. The cost, just real quickly, what, from what we could see, and Chapman is a small school, so the additional costs are the fifty-three hundred dollars on that flyer. What we'll get back from reducing the amount of trash we throw out is about a hundred, right, I talked to Sean Kimble, about a hundred four dollars per ton. So, if it's ten tons over the course of a year, we would get a thousand dollars reduced in our trash bill, but we're paying five thousand dollars. So, there's no doubt it costs more just because of the pickups that have to be made. And then there is a one-time cost to buy all the bins that you need to do this. So, what I, you know, will do is come back to the board and, you know, to the sustainability committee and let them know, here's the results of the pilot, you know, this is what the incremental cost is. We didn't budget for this next year in the operating budget, that, you know, is a decision that the board can certainly make. Or if there's additional NIP reimbursement money to fund it, we can expand the program. So, again, the goal of the pilot is to understand what does this entail, and does it work? And thank you, Tony, for acknowledging that Fiona Pearson and Pam Roach have really been, you know, coming to us, and we met with them, and we, you know, we explained our concern about the cost, but also, you know, the goal here is, as Erica said, we want the kids to eat their food. So, the example I use is eat the banana and compost the peel. It's not that simple, and, you know, unfortunately, some of the food waste we're seeing, which is extraordinarily high, we think, that's a lot of weight, is because under the reimbursable meal program, students have to take all the components of the meal, and if they don't want it, or they don't have time, or they don't like and don't eat it, then it winds up in composting. I'm not saying that composting is creating a bigger problem, because it's just going into trash anyway, but that's kind of the challenge, you know, for us. So, when this pilot's over, June, we'll come back and give a final report, and we can decide from there where to go.
Great.
Just so you have a sense of dollars we're talking about, too, and NIPS from April first, twenty-twenty-three to September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. Five months, or seven months. Hundred and ninety-seven thousand NIPS were sold, ten thousand dollars paid back to Cheshire. The total from October one-twenty-one to September twenty-twenty-three is thirty-seven thousand dollars. So, if it keeps coming in on, you know, that sort of money, it's a, it's pretty good.
Sold in Cheshire?
Cheshire alone.
Oh, my.
April, May, June, July, August, September, six months, a hundred and ninety-seven thousand NIPS were sold in Cheshire over that period.
And I believe it, because I pick up the little NIP bottles across the street from my house every weekend.
By the way, there is proposed legislation to eliminate NIPS altogether, which would hurt the revenue stream. Just saying.
By comparison-
There's some reasons for that, too, though.
Wallingford had six hundred and twenty-one thousand NIPS in the same period. Connecticut-
So, we're not a-
It's kind of scary.
We're not a focal point.
We're not an outlier, no. Ansonia, a town that's much smaller, three hundred and forty-three thousand NIPS in that same period. I don't know what the state total is. I mean, in Bridgeport alone, one-point-five-million NIPS in that period.
One-point-five-million?
NIPS are dollars, like the bottles- Bristol, one-point-one-million NIPS sold. Yeah, you know, there have to be a billion, almost a billion NIPS almost statewide in the course of six, seven months. It's insane. Bridgewater didn't sell any, in case you're keeping track.
Mr. Grippo, you have a question?
So, I'm not really familiar with the business model, Blue Earth compost, but, so I'm looking at this graphic here, and so they charge us to pick up the compost?
Yes.
And then, don't they sell it? Don't they create, like, a soil and stuff with it?
I think they have two revenue streams, actually.
Very expensive to buy?
I think they're producing some biofuels, and they're also, you know, creating compost, which, by the way, we could buy back.
Well, so I guess the question I'm getting to is, so, we are paying them-
Yeah.
-to pick up their raw material for them to profit, and we're not getting anything back for it? I'd just like to make that point.
No, that is, that is correct.
We don't even get a dump truck full of compost for our landscapers around town or something like that?
Erica has a really good relationship at this point with the owner, so maybe we'll, you know, maybe we'll buy a bushel and get one free or something, but no, that, their business model, you know, that's the way they operate.
That's a good business model for them.
Yeah, their business model makes them money.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's the-
Hot news.
That's a challenge, though. There's very thin margins for what they do due to the overhead, so I'm not defending it, but I-
Well, I'm just saying, we're paying them.
That's true, yeah, I get it.
We will be using their compost at the greenhouse for this spring, so.
I'm sure it's a wonderful product, but are we paying them to get it?
Yeah.
We will be.
Ah, okay.
You know-
They did offer a minimal amount.
We didn't really talk about this, but, you know, there is an important educational component to this that's going on, and actually buying back the composting and using it at the greenhouse is something that we will let the students know. I mean, we mentioned it, but, you know, we'll keep reinforcing that, that, yeah, that food waste is now coming back, and it's, you know, helping us grow, you know, vegetables in our greenhouse that you may consume, actually, in some of the food that we serve.
There's no denying that turning food waste into compost is a great idea. It's great for the garden. All the trees that I planted last year on my property had a dump load of compost brought in, because the soil stinks where I live, and it's great stuff. But what I'm saying is, is that we're paying them to pick up their raw material so that they could sell it back to me for, you know, a hundred dollars a yard, or whatever it is, maybe more, two hundred, but, you know, just saying.
Yeah, alternatively, we have a rotting compost pile somewhere on our property, you know, which isn't great either, so.
And there is a bill to force this, not only for schools but businesses, that is being discussed, it's been proposed. It may pass. There, the one thing, I don't want to take too much more time, but we're lucky that Blue Earth does this anaerobic digestion, because it enables us to throw a lot more into the composting waste stream than other communities that don't have anaerobic digestion. And now they're doing more traditional composting, so more would go into trash and less into composting. So, this requirement to do it statewide is going to be more difficult in some communities than others. But as of right now, we're just doing a pilot in one school to see how it goes.
So, I just want to thank everybody who has been taking part on that initiative, because I think it's a very important educational endeavor, and I'm happy to hear that we have been piloting it at Chapman School. Beautiful, thank you. Mark, you had a comment or question?
Do they at least give us a discount on the compost that we gave them?
No. Not that I'm aware of. I think they also, Southington is where biopower is, and a lot of it also gets sold to them in Southington, so we are, we're very close, it doesn't. And biopower might buy it from them as well, so it might just be the best business model like anyone has seen. They, you pay them, pick it up, you're paying them to bring it back, and they're getting paid to drop it off, all around.
We will bring it to Blue Earth to say the board would really like to have their compost at a better price.
I can't, Blue Earth, Fiona, and Pam were all at the kickoff event at Chapman, and they all were there celebrating that day as well, so it was very exciting.
I, I think it's a great thing, I love it, but, you know, Adam does bring up a good point.
Mr. White?
Thank you. Yeah, Adam, Mark, I share your concern. The one thing, the one thing I want to point out that I think is directly related to this program, and that almost certainly will impact us in other financial ways in the near future, is that Connecticut, there's been some press about it, but basically, we have a real problem with trash.
Yes.
We're running out of space, so what we've been doing for a couple decades now is burning basically all of our trash. From that, we get, we get energy, we get electricity, we also get ash. Nobody wants the ash. There's no towns in Connecticut, and literally where we are now, probably in the next couple of years, probably being debated in the legislature this spring, is how to address that. So, what they're trying to do is significantly increase recycling and composting, with the alternative being, as I understand it, probably trucking to Ohio, which gets expensive, because you're talking about, you know, vehicle rentals, fuel, and stuff like that. So, forget about the environment. I'm just talking economics, there's a real financial impact, assuming no towns want ash in their town or landfills. As far as I know, most of our landfills are basically done, we're not doing anymore. My guess is, most towns don't want them. We, the town of Cheshire, when I was on the council ten or fifteen years ago, we actually got offered, I think, two million dollars a year to put, to start taking the ash, and the whole council basically laughed at it, like, no, because there's no one in this town who's going to want ash and ash dump near their house. So, this is a, this, there is a real problem with our trash disposal, and I suspect this composting, including the higher cost of composting relative to the cost of trash collection, is driving these programs.
I think you're right, Tim. And, you know, composting costs money, and, you know-
Or driving to Ohio costs money.
We're either going to pay to compost, or we're going to pay to dump, so.
So, we've had the styrofoam trays, and I'll just, I know it's very, I'll be very quick, I promise. The styrofoam trays are very inexpensive, they usually cost pennies. When you go to the fiber ones and the composting materials, they're upwards of ten, twelve, twenty cents, depending on the material that it's used. Composting overall is very expensive. We just, we're looking at other additional products to bring in to reduce our plastic consumption, and it's just all more costly, and it's what, how much it's going to end up costing us to do that. And we are actually, we truck a lot of our garbage to Pennsylvania right now. The burning facility that was in Hartford did have to close for shutdown. It is not allowed to burn garbage anymore. I was in a green district before, which I know, there's only one, I think, and it's down in Bridgeport that is still an incinerator, so a lot of it goes, and it is a very large expense, which could be exactly why, and you are correct, that they want all of this to happen. We do have a very large garbage problem in Connecticut, and it is very costly, and that is, and they love buying it in Pennsylvania, and I don't know why, but I have heard that.
Mr. White, bring us home, please.
You mentioned, you mentioned the water bottles, the water, and that is-
We sell water bottles-
It's healthy? No, I'm just curious, have you ever professionally, here in the state of- Have you ever professionally, here in the state of Connecticut, have you ever encountered unhealthy bottled water?
I have not encountered unhealthy bottled water, just water that is not on the healthy food certification list, because not all water is on the list.
I just have to say, I mean, this just strikes me as, this just strikes me as regulatory overkill. Thank you.
I can't say we offer water in three varieties, boxed, aluminum bottles, and plastic. That's my last note.
And from my tab.
Yes.
Okay.
Dr. Harrigan, can I just?
Yes, please do.
I do want to commend Erica. She's always enthusiastic and a cheerleader for, you know, food service programs. This composting pilot has gone very well. It's not an accident, it's because of Erica and her staff really took the bull by the horn. So thanks, Erica, for doing a good job with this. Appreciate it.
And I want to say thank you, and the board thanks you for spending the time tonight to inform us on these issues and for being last on, next to last on our agenda. So thank you for staying.
Thank you all very much. I'm glad you all want to know about it, and that's all that matters to me. Thank you.
Yeah, it's great. Okay, moving on, chair's update in the interest of time. I'm, I believe I've said everything that I needed to say throughout the evening. So I will call for a motion to adjourn. I expect to see hands shooting up. Mr. Perigini and a second, Mr. Ecki?
Give it up.
I let her read three motions.
Be their submission.
All in favor? Great, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.